Because they sort of cut out for trees and stuff. You're in digital water.
Yeah, unfortunately he's not going to get to where I wanted him to get to, but it's better than where it was.
Coke or Diet Coke is your option?
Diet, yeah. All right. Thank you, David.
You fighting a headache?
Something in my back. Did work on one weekend in the house and it was like older something here.
Yeah.
A little long.
Even though you've done that, I think I'm of the age where it's way better.
I know the pain.
Just I saw it by virtue of waking up. Or play with the kids down on the floor, you know, and you get up. Here, Marjorie.
Mary?
Yeah.
What work do you have?
Actually, one of the properties downtown North Canton.
Okay.
You know, the Sunford Avenue, which is near Hopper Schneidler.
Yeah.
Some, I'm sure Ward Avenue is.
Ward Three.
Ward Three. And then what about downtown North Canton?
Depending on where it's at, we're about to.
Warrior. So here's some properties on Warrior, you said? That's the issue I'm here. I want to talk about. So I definitely want to talk to you. Sure, why don't you? Do you have a few minutes here? We'd like to be here with you. So I don't know that I have a card with me, but it would be nice to meet you.
You take the light.
Okay. He was at the time. He was doing, getting work in the property. Okay.
Well, I was gonna say this for Marjorie. But there's three.
Right.
That guy.
Yeah, I don't know. It's interesting.
What are you saying in secret? Oh, I know that guy. He came. Yeah, I know. His mother, that's why he's.
That's not right either. Yeah. Right. Can I tell you what?
I say, do you see?
I don't know if I can sit here.
There's a chair here.
No, who is?
There's a chair. You just take a picture in back here. It's very nice. And your press, and you are. Oops.
No, I'm, the repastor usually sits here. I've been videotaping his meetings for the last eight years, I guess.
Okay.
Chuck Osborne.
Yeah, I think I get some emails from you.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Yeah. I think we should say hello.
Hello. I'm not.
Has it become public record?
But I think it's the instinct.
There's kids in the house. Are they, are they background?
See, I still don't understand what you're saying. We're gonna have to turn that. I don't know.
Oh, okay. So here's the main street. Okay. Here's seven. How long do these usually last?
Oh, that's, I mean, we're for thirty minutes to three hours.
God, I gotta get on.
It should be a short one.
Yeah, their considerations are. But there's an alley here. And then you start. It doesn't seem like. Oh, here's a bunch. Open this up and all of a sudden you've got cars. It just doesn't, you know, there's nothing that. Isn't, isn't like anything else, they try to wear out anybody that. You know, figure out they'll leave after a while and don't have to hear from them. Part of the depth of the city law. So what are you gonna do with the rest of that along with? Thank you.
This was on your.
So are you gonna just leave that for people to walk around trash? That's what she has.
I remember.
You know, what are you, what's your plan? I just want more of that.
There's more.
We are invited. There's more of us now because like Google gives you a quick watch. I mean, there's like ten of us here now. And our friend has some time before they show up. I'm here to support. Because the pool is so. It's also gonna make it really fun. And some more time was here for us. Well, he was interested to know, who are your city partners? Because sometimes some of us. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Wants to build a middle school.
Where are the kids?
Everyone here. You want the dogwood. The city wants the middle school.
Thank you.
Yeah, when he walks from my home, so. But so we had Saturday, we didn't part of Sunday. Yeah.
I picked it up. It's out there. Seat over there. Yeah, there.
Jen Campbell. I think if she could get out of the salon. Oh, maybe that was Melissa.
Because your cookies, there's somebody over there.
I don't think so.
She's way better than us.
Yeah.
She was a class. She comes on.
Who? I don't know. He just stayed. Who? Who?
Which one?
Sorry. Haven't she suffered?
I think that. I think that's a lot for her.
Yeah, it's nice to put a face on me.
Yes, sir. I don't think this can be. Often times it's parking near them like you. Actually, they parked the other day.
I thought they have a floor house.
The other day they were parked, you couldn't even depress your side door. It would hit the lights.
You're gonna get the same. Yeah. Zip.
I tried another text.
I don't have much.
This was just reasonable.
Yes.
It's already done.
It's done. This is formal.
Yeah, he's, he's. That's what Susan.
What he plays.
They fire all guns.
He can drink like a sailor. That's. Or at least that's what he tries to prove. He doesn't need to learn anymore.
He'll learn that. It's every time.
Jen? Yeah, I got it. I'm a lot. What did Sue say? I see it on my watch.
Peace in the ass.
Those two eyes. What is it?
Yeah, they're, they're thinking.
Is it working?
Are those open now?
No, it's just the far one on the end.
It's blinking, two eyes.
Trying to.
Yeah, I have no idea.
One over there too.
I see it blinking.
They're really thinking about it.
Yeah.
All right, well, if at least got.
All right. I now call to order. Sorry. I now call to order the city council meeting October ninth, twenty twenty-three. The time is seven oh two P M. Opening prayer. Daryl, please rise for the prayer.
Our heads. Almighty Creator. Tonight, we give simple thanks for autumn. The cool windy days, the blue clouded skies, the rich colors that roam our streets, the bounty of the harvest, which we will soon celebrate with our families. We are grateful. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number eighteen.
Here.
Number wire.
Here.
Number McLeister.
Here.
Number Warren.
Here.
Number Stroya.
Here.
Number Volt.
Here.
Number Orr.
Here.
Seven president. Okay, for your consideration, can I have a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from September, the September eleventh committee and council, September eighteenth committee, September twenty-fifth public hearings and council, September twenty twenty-three finance report and the codification updates to chapters one, one fifty-five and seven oh three.
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, some quick housekeeping. So we do have one of the potential owls and we have a lot of people. So council and administration, if we could speak up so everybody can hear it back and forth. And also when you're at the podium, if you could speak a little bit louder than normal. So tonight is open topic. Public speaks. At this time, members of the public wishing to address council may do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Comments may be on any topic under the city authorities, which are not limited to the agenda tonight. This does not include qualifications for elected officials that are any candidates. The rules for speaking and the time will be on both screen, screens. This will serve as the only warning for everyone in attendance. Any violation of the rules will result in injection from the premises. Anyone wishing to address council may approach this podium. Give your, start with your name and address, please.
Hello, Ken McAdams, eleven oh one Woodrow Street, northwest. Couple of things I just wanted to say is I really appreciate what you guys have done as far as what sidewalks are starting to look like on Woodrow Street. They look absolutely amazing and I can't wait to see it, see it being finished. North Maine, the, all the, all the activities downtown are absolutely outstanding too. And I'm glad it was so good to polish it off with the new Berlin Fest. My only concern, I'll keep it quick. Last week I had usually, normally I'll listen to it on YouTube, trying to follow through with the presentation that Mr. Delorio made. I kind of had a hard time hearing him and would like to have some clarification on the Woodrow Lois Water Project. Anytime will be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council?
Susan Meadows, two three two Sixth Street, northeast North Canton. I also forgot to give you these. These are pictures of the pool.
Why don't you submit them to the president of council?
Oh, great.
Thank you.
You can pass them.
Thank you.
Those are pictures of the pool. There was a comment made here that the pool doesn't get much use. Those pictures were taken towards the end of the year when the weather was cool. So you can see that. And there was a statement made here. They're on your head. They're on your head, Sue. Thank you. Not, my head isn't attached though. That fifty years ago in nineteen seventy-one, it was a lot different here for the pool. And fifty years later, people have pools in their backyard and a lot of kids don't use it anymore. So by the pictures you can tell that that statement is not true. The, the statement that everybody has a pool in their backyard, I don't. My neighbors don't. I've looked a couple of times to see if I have one, but I don't. So for that, and then. I went to the city and was kindly given information that I requested. And one of, one of the forms, the last form on it is signed by David Held and Timothy Fox. So I don't know how that got in here, but anyway. And I asked, what year did the YMCA start to operate Dogwood Pool? And that this request is denied. The answer to that is nineteen seventy-one. What is the daily allowed capacity in Dogwood Pool? This request is denied. And it says, requests for information are considered improper requests under O R one four point four three, Public Records Act, blah blah. So each one of these questions was under that. The amount of revenue the city is losing, this request is denied. And I have figured that out to be. Okay, I will get to that. I have so many figures written on here. Anyway, what is the amount the revenue the city is losing? A copy of the YMCA pool management, the percentage city pays the YMCA to manage the pool, this request is denied. These team memberships she's included, which I'm doing. I just got them today, so I haven't really had a chance to go over all the information I was given. They only retain records for ten years, so from twenty fourteen to twenty thirteen, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Premises financial revenue, operating expenses make other records of information. I was sort of given information for that, but I haven't been able to go through it yet. What was the amount the city received to make the pool building ADA accessible? And the city is not aware of receiving any grants for the purpose of making the pool house ADA accessible. Therefore, your request is denied. And that's what we have been told for two years, that the pool house was going to be torn down to make it ADA accessible. So I don't know of that. Membership passes perches in twenty-ten and twenty-two. And I did get an answer on that, but at the moment, it's giving me. So far, we need. Oh, and, and the picture that I'm passing around is the pool liner laying on the ground over there right now in a heap. The pool is painted white on the inside, so it's not in the pool. So it must not be that important if it's just laying there out in the open in a heap. Dogwood for an individual is eighty-eight dollars and two hundred and twelve, but if you joined the other one that they own, it's five hundred and seventy-five. Yeah, okay. Thank you. See you next week.
May I speak? Yes, thank you. I'm Tommy Morvath, seven seven eight four Bertini Drive, northwest North Canton. I live in, Bayberry Woods is a condominium association. We live in a cul-de-sac off of Orion, Orion. We're from the North Canton natives. I have noticed over the years that we are a private concern. We pay taxes, we vote on issues, we may pass the issues, we may not. People we vote for, but our vote, my vote is always included. But because we are a private concern, we get not anything from the, from the city besides police and paramedics. But they don't move the snow, they don't do street repair. What my main question is, and there are a few other things, that we do pay taxes like everybody else, but none of the city help. My question is, is there any way we could get a reimbursement on taxes? Even a five percent, ten percent would be lovely. I'm on a fixed income, as is a lot of people in that community, Bayberry Woods. And love, love North Canton, happy to live in a beautiful community as I do, especially North Canton. But if there is any possibility, you can give me a break and my people that live in Bayberry on our taxes, I would certainly appreciate that. Is anybody able to tell me that that might be doable? Do I have to file papers?
That is not.
Mr. Delorio?
When your, when your condominium association was built, as all the other condominium associations in North Canton and probably elsewhere, they were built to a developer standard. Developer has an opportunity to build the city, the roads to service your development to the city standard. Had they done so, they could have turned them over to the city after they were built and the city could have maintained them. But the developer chose to build them with lesser grade materials, narrower in scope and not with all the associated drainage that the city would normally put in. So as far as we're concerned, it's a private road. So as far as we're concerned, it's a private road, and the city is not interested in taking the private road over and then having to invest, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to correct what the developer decided to do on the cheap.
How about trash pickup or recycling? We have none of that as well.
I know, you're in a condominium association where you're bound by their rules, and they provide, you know, that particular service, if you will.
So because it's written in stone, there's no way it's ever changed?
And it's, your plight, or depending on how you look at it, is the same everywhere else. Fredericksburg, they have condominiums, on Lois Lane, they have condominiums. It's just all the same. And North Canton is largely built out, but there, you know, one of the ordinances that I was looking to put forward next year was that, as it relates to future development and future condominium associations, that they be required, that the developer be required to build the roads to city standards.
So what you're saying is, no, no, we'll get no help on my taxes?
Can't do. And I'd say that, you know, as far as the taxes that you pay...
Guys, let's not do the back and forth. This is an open topic where we're not having a question.
Right, I'm just trying to understand what gentleman's telling me.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Just say what you have to say, and then we can address it afterwards.
Okay, okay. You're finished?
I'm told that I am.
Sorry.
Okay, I guess I am, too. You answered my question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please refer to the slide that I previously provided. My name is Bill Holes, and we live at 1330 Hyacinth Drive, near the intersection of Apple Grove. Our half acre lot, this is on Slide 2, our half acre lot is divided by a 12-foot wide easement for the Chatham Hills ditch. A 24-foot bridge provides access to property on the west side of the ditch. The house on the east side is at a slightly higher elevation. Slide 3 shows the Chatham Hills ditch also passes behind four other homes on Hyacinth Drive between Apple Grove and Hall Road. All five homes are within the city limits and have approximately the same finished floor elevation. Rain from Chapel Hill Drive also drains into this section of the Chatham Hills ditch. Slide 4 shows a box culvert that was installed under Apple Grove to replace a smaller culvert during the 2008 Phase 1 whiting project. Two additional circular culverts were installed for pavement runoff, and another box culvert was installed downstream at Hall Road. I believe the Hall Road culvert contributes to higher water levels in our backyard by restricting the flow from the three Apple Grove culverts and the runoff of Chapel Hill Drive. Slide 5 shows water flowing around our bridge and over our bridge on June 4, 2020. The property on the west side of the ditch is completely flooded. Slide 6 shows that the Apple Grove box culvert was near its capacity, and the two circular culverts were fully submerged during the rainfall. Slide 7 shows extensive flooding looking west from our back door on May 14, 2022. This water level is inside the fence and near the finished floor elevation of 1,128 feet as recorded on the Phase 1 Apple Grove survey. Slide 8 shows the May 14, 2022 flooding as due from the west side of our property. The house on Apple Grove is flooded, and the water is near the elevation of the Apple Grove roadway. Slide 9 shows the FEMA flood zone A boundaries being between Apple Grove Street and Hall Road. The May 14, 22 flooding exceeded these boundaries, and our home was nearly flooded. Slide 10 shows the Chapel Hill ditch watershed north of Apple Grove Street, east of North Main Street. I believe the clearing of approximately 20 acres of land vegetation for commercial development on the west side of North Main Street and drainage from the retention pond constructed north of Strat upon Drive will increase the flow into the Chatham Hills ditch. Slide 11 shows what I believe is excavation that connected drainage from the commercial development to the storm drain running under North Main Street that discharges into the Chatham Hills ditch behind Autozone. Slide 12 shows the Strat upon Drive retention pond. During the 2008 Apple Grove whiting project, I expressed written concerns to Stark County Engineering Department that the additional pavement runoff could cause our home to flood. On August 14, August 20, and August 23 of this year, I sent letters to Robert Graham, North Canton engineer, providing details contained in several of the previous letters, and I also expressed concern about additional water flow from the commercial development on North Main. David Matheny, Ward 2 council member, and Keith Bennett, Stark County engineer, were copied on these letters. In conclusion, to avoid flooding the five homes on Hyacinth Drive, I request collaboration between this administration and Stark County to reduce the Chatham Hills ditch flow restrictions from Hall Road to where discharge is into the west branch of the Nemisilla Creek, so that the water flow encounter on May 14, 22, 2022 and additional water from the North Main Commercial Development will not exceed the FEMA flood zone A boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you.
First thing, I'd like to support what Sue was alluding to or talking about with the Dogwood Pool. I think it's a very important city asset, and I would hate to see North Canton decide to not have it. I know a lot of women came here to support Sue with that. My kids all swam there, and I just think that there ought to be some way that the community can figure out how to go forward and make it a profitable, or at least economically feasible, asset. We try to show how wonderful North Canton is, and I've loved living here. I think we just need to continue to support that. My other thing is, I live in a small neighborhood, and I have seen, looked up, and found that the community improvement corporation has bought three out of the four homes between Sixth and Seventh on the east side of Main. I'm assuming, in case the school bond issue passes, or I was heard through the grapevine, a turn lane. My concern is that my small neighborhood is right behind that. There is an alley right behind those homes or businesses, and I would like to know what the city plans to do with the rest of that property that those buildings are on and the alley behind, so that we don't have Main Street sitting in our neighborhood. We are a nice neighborhood, we have block parties, we get together, and I hate to see our small neighborhood ruined because Main Street traffic is practically at our front door. So I'd like to hear what the city plans to do if that does become a school, and the middle school does go there, and if the turn lane is made. I'd like whoever plans these things to keep in mind that we would like to keep our neighborhood intact, and we don't want traffic right at our front door. So hopefully, that's kept in mind. Other than that, that's about it. Thank you.
Evening, friends and neighbors. My name is Judge Kurt Warren. I'm the judge of the Canton Municipal Court, which, if you're unaware, is 16 jurisdictions. I think this is 15 or 16 on my tour of those jurisdictions I've been taking this year to go see all the townships, municipalities, villages, in our total jurisdiction, just to say hello. I am a resident of North Canton, but tonight, I'm here as judge of the Canton Municipal Court. Like to see how we're doing, like to put a face to what's going on. I know in a lot of the townships I've been to, they're just glad to see that we're there and we're... Usually, things are pretty quiet, which means things are going pretty well, and it's nice to see you all. Generally, we talk about fire and safety when I'm out visiting, and I always tell my councilperson how grateful I am for the North Canton PD. I think they do a terrific job. They're the ones I see on a regular basis, and also on your investment in criminal justice, your lights and security cameras. I don't think there's a traffic accident that goes on question here because it's caught on camera. You have everything you need. I know fighting crime's always going to be a daily struggle, but you've got a great team, so you should be proud of them. But I'm just here, I'll see you afterwards if you have any questions about how we're doing. Thank you all.
Kurt, can you give your name and address for that, or your address for that question?
1593 Alexandria Parkway.
Thank you.
Had to think, wasn't it? 121 Cleveland Avenue South.
Anyone else wishing to address counsel?
Aaron Meisner, 202 Royer Avenue Northwest, North Canton. Couple of quick things. I own a couple of properties in North Canton, they're rental properties, and I found out that inspectors who come inspect the properties wear cameras, and they do not tell anyone that they are inspecting the household that they're going into. I had no idea about it. I had, you know, kids in these homes are running around, personal items that might, they want to put away that were personal use. And I had to go to my tenants and tell them that they were being filmed after the fact because the inspectors had not the decency to let us know that, hey, by the way, we're wearing cameras before they go in. I mean, how hard is that? Why is that hidden?
That's invasions.
Hey, this is not a reaction, this is public speak, that's it. Let's not add drama to anything.
So why is that hidden? I don't understand that. I hear that, yes, the inspectors are background checked and BCI. Okay, great. But, I mean, this is a personal residence, and I feel, at least it was board, that you should let the people who own the properties, before they let the man, say, hey, this is going to be filmed, so you might want to let your tenants know that, hey, maybe you want to have your kids there, pictures, personals, bill, whatever the case is. I mean, I think that should be said for sure. So that's probably my name. I already talked to Jamie already, but she's going to be taking care of another issue of violation notices are being sent out prior to owners of prior owners, which is ridiculous as well, for building permits and stuff like that. I buy a property three months ago, I buy a property two months ago, and I get a violation notice in the mail that were, it was basically five months old, saying, oh, you're in violation. I'm like, I didn't even own the property then. Well, the inspector was so backlogging work, I don't know, didn't do his job, that all of a sudden, I get the violation notice, and I'm in violation of work that was being done till probably five months ago, before I owned it. And I had to pay these fines and fees, and now I have to pay $150 to go to appeal this to get taken off my record. And then we have the building department personally, Mike Porter personally calling Remax, saying that Aaron Meisner should not be selling this property because it has violation notices. He's getting personally involved. That's overstepping, I think. So I talked to SafeBuild, you know, who runs the department, and I'm talking to, you know, Glenn Lindsay here, the regional director, tomorrow, but I think some steps need to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Melanie J. Roll, 308 Forty Street Northwest, North Canton, Ohio. It was my intent to speak September 25 at the third reading of Ordinance 702023 to expand the registration requirements to all rental units in the city. As you all know, it was the goal of the city to require all rental units to be registered when the program was first discussed, and it was the goal of the citizen committee as well. Starting with eight or fewer units to understand how best to implement the rental registration program was an excellent choice, and having SafeBuild with Mr. Van Gundy's expertise allowed the process to be implemented. Also, Mr. Young played a vital role in the registration process. Now let's get all the units inspected and registered. The citizen committee was also concerned of the ratio of rental units versus owner-occupied dwellings in the city. In 2005, when I canvassed the reverse zoning legislation that allowed single-family dwellings to be divided into multi-units in what is known as the city core, Harmon, north to Charlotte, Reem, west to Williman, Dottie McGrew, who covered the North Canton government for a very long time, reported in the Akron Beacon Journal, and I quote, "About 25% of the city's housing stock is rental." Mr. Revolt reported in a recent council meeting, a much larger percentage. Some suggestions: Place a moratorium on any additional multi-unit rental units. Also, place a moratorium on additional long-term care facilities in the city, a topic for another time. Another component of the housing stock is owner-occupied dwellings. How best for the city to address exterior deteriorating conditions? This is a problem in all four wards. The addition of personnel for nuisance inspection will allow more surveillance of the city's neighborhoods. I believe that request is in the upcoming budget, not, don't know for sure. I strongly suggest if it is, council give its approval. While I understand adding to the income tax base is important for the city to thrive, please do not overlook the city's housing stock. I have long championed for the city to promote thriving neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Final call? Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance 61-2023?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify 1434 Pittsburgh Avenue Northwest, Stark County Parcel Number 9208870, in the city of North Canton, in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in Chapter 1182 of the Planning and Zoning Code from residential, single-family, small lot, R50, to residential, multifamily, A, RMFA.
If you need an economic development, Darrell. This is the second of three readings, making a rezone request up on the corner of Pittsburgh and Liberty. You have a map. This rezone request is being done at the request of the property owner. This was a catch-up from the outgrowth of some cleanup that we did earlier, and we are, I think, be responsive to the property owner. Are there any questions? Seemed unenited, I'll move the adoption of the second reading of ordinance 61-23.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Folks? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance 71-2023?
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements that, once made, will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and real taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax income equivalent fund, and providing related authorizations pursuant to a higher revised code, Sections 5709.40B, 5709... Sections five seven oh nine point four zero B, five seven oh nine point four two, five seven oh nine point four three, five seven oh nine point eight three two, and five seven oh nine point eight five.
Daryl.
Okay, this again is the second of three readings establishing a TIF in an area on North Main Street, within the Main Street Gateway. Record again should reflect that this TIF is for the non-school portion of those property taxes. And the duration of the period will be three years.
Point of order before we vote, I believe, member Y, Rick.
That is true. You're going to short the library. Rebecca Chee's terribly upset. Okay, are there any questions or comments? Again, we'll bring this back for a third and final reading in a couple of weeks. And again, I think the language is pretty specific, this is for infrastructure improvements in the area.
I'll make a motion.
Revolt will second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, John.
Motion carries.
She's regained her control, you can bring her back.
Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance eighty-one dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance amending Chapter nine five nine Rental Rates and Policies of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton to clarify regulations and repeal outdated policy. No, you're, you're okay, Matt?
I am.
We already passed the ruling.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Because he isn't too.
You can go back out.
Yeah.
Do you want me to go? Yeah?
We're good, we're good.
Okay. So this is essentially just pulling some things out of law that shouldn't have ever been as law. We've talked about it several times. Anyone have any questions? All right, move that we adopt the second reading of ordinance eighty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Revolt seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance eighty-three dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance adjusting rates and fees for building and zoning permits and associated plan reviews in the city of North Canton.
Daryl.
We have a proposal to revisit rates. Those, those fees had not been adjusted, I think, since two thousand and eleven. Is that correct, clerk?
Correct.
Well, there, there have been minor one-off tweaks.
But this is the, and, and this was accompanied, again, I think the record should reflect, this was, the ordinance before us this evening is the result of a comprehensive review and activities with administrative staff. So I don't have anything to add unless the administration does. Again, this is only the second reading, we'll have a third reading in two weeks. So you've done that, I'll make a motion, we adopt the second reading of ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-three.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance eighty-five dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance establishing, establishing Chapter seven one one Yard Care Providers of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to regulate the provision of landscaping services.
Mr. President? Yeah?
I would ask if, that the council consider tabling ordinance eighty-five, twenty twenty-three to allow for additional consideration by the administration?
Okay, let's open for discussion, and if there's no further discussion.
I'll make the motion that we table this.
Second?
Revolt seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, motion stated. Moving on to new business. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance eighty-six dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures and related one-time permanent transfers of monies made to various funds for the period beginning January one, twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
We finance some properties, Stephanie.
Okay, last week we had a great initial discussion regarding the budget. And Patrick did a great job kind of explaining it on a higher level. And as we said, it's a fluid document, so things can happen within a week. Any, any thoughts or comments this week? Are things, are things holding?
No new information so far.
Okay. And I, again, the public can always reach out to us during those discussions, during the budget time, and we can answer those questions during these meetings too. So as we said, it continues to be a fluid document. If there are no other questions or concerns from council, then we'll move to adopt that to second.
Revolt seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read the title of Resolution eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-three?
A resolution to acknowledge the rates and fees utilized to establish the budget for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Okay, we talked again about this and how long had been since a lot of fees and structure hadn't been kind of looked at. And so those fees are all here, looking at the budget and weighing in, and it's everything from park fees, with or without le, with or without lights, to plan reviews, to plumbing permits, to ambulance services. So there are, I think, four pages of fees, so it becomes an integral part of the budget. Are there any questions or concerns?
That's a, a lot of work, so thank you, administration, again. That is a very heavy lift there.
And we had a lot of different conversations about that, and how they apply, and when they apply to people, and businesses versus individuals, and a lot of work. If there are no other questions or concerns, then move to adopt the first reading.
Revolt seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into a contract for professional auction services for the sale of vehicles and equipment that are obsolete or unfit for public use, or are not needed for municipal purposes, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, so the third one on my agenda. This is standard practice and what we do to, to get rid of old equipment, like they said. And it's everything from police cars to parked vehicles, to an asphalt hot box, to an Echoline fan, or van, copiers. So just an assortment of things that we get rid of and make a little money from. Any questions or concerns?
What's in the asphalt, asphalt hot box?
I'll put you in it. It's old.
He's going to sell it to his wife.
Right. So if there are no other questions or concerns, I will move that to the second reading as well.
Revolt seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
So.
Second?
Revolt seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-three under suspension orders?
Revolt moves.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department reports, let's start with Patrick. The report. Gina?
I did, I just wanted to review that, or make a note that you did receive the quarterly reports for finance, so you'll have the check report for the third quarter, as well as the monthly and quarter reports through September thirtieth. So if you had any questions or wanted to review any of those, just let me know.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank the audience for participating tonight, sharing your thoughts and concerns that we will be looking into for you, and for you. Again, our community and outside of our community supported the Oktoberfest that was recently held this last weekend. I would say throughout the day, maybe four thousand people had attended that. I want to thank our administration and the chamber and all the partners who supported the Oktoberfest. It was, again, it was well received, and people enjoyed coming out. Got a little chilly, but it was well done. And I want to thank our team, and again, the chamber and other community partners who put that on. On Wednesday, I'll have the opportunity to be attending the, the annual Fire Prevention Week breakfast that is going to be held at First Christian Church. And I'm going to have the honor to award a proclamation to a young lady who's a third grader here in our North Canton Intermediate School, or, yes. And her name is Leila, L.A.Y., L.A., Gillespie. She's a third grader, and she won, she's the overall winner for the Stark County Fire Prevention Third Grade Covering Contest. And she competed with everybody in the state, or, excuse me, in Stark County. So she's the overall winner, and will be presenting her proclamation and recognition there. And also, I have a proclamation dedicating that this week, on behalf of the city administration, North Canton Fire Department, I want to thank the educators of North Canton and across Stark County for their support in teaching students on how to prevent fires and how to respond properly in a fire situation, which are skills students will remember and practice throughout their lives. That's a little bit of a summary. But I think our, our schools do a great job and try and educate our young people about fire and personal safety. So we'll be making that proclamation this coming Wednesday. And that's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Did you try to blow the Apple Horn before, when you were making the?
For the audience, there is an Alpenhorn.
Alpen, that's.
That they use in Germany and Switzerland. And, yes, I did, I had the opportunity to test it, I signed it, and I participated in it. And we had about nine young people under, I'd say sixteen, or participate. Then we had the adult division. And we tested for length of time and decibels. And someone was able to blow into it for over twenty seconds. And a young lady here locally got that award. I think she got a T-shirt and a special utensil to drink alcoholic beverage. An adult beverage, I think, or it could be anything. But it, it was, it was actually well-received, so thank you very much. And that might become a tradition for our Oktoberfest. But otherwise, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
That's a long answer for that, isn't it?
Well, it was, you know, it was a very unique thing that happened, so.
It was unique.
I appreciate it. Council clerk, Ben?
The report?
Okay. Moving on to council reports, Jamie, Ward one.
Yeah, I was just going to give a big shout out to the North Canton Area Chamber of Commerce, because I too, actually, I think several of us were at the event this weekend. It was an absolutely fantastic event. And Mayor, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, the woman who won, was she the one who beat out her husband, I believe, right?
Yes, it was a husband and wife competition.
It was a husband and wife duel down to the very end, so, but that was pretty impressive, and I was pretty excited. I think I'm going to try the, the Alpenhorn contest next year, so. Also, wanted to send a shout out to our, or just acknowledge our firefighters with the North Canton Fire Department. This is Fire Safety Week, and I happened to bump into the mayor over at the Fire Department Open House, which sadly, unless you guys leave immediately right now, you're probably going to miss because it is over eight o'clock. But just, they did a fantastic job this evening, and there are a lot of members of the community there enjoying it, so. That's all I have to share.
President, Troy?
Yes?
Just to follow up on that. The theme this year, so you know, is cooking, safety starts with you. And the theme was for, when you're cooking at home, how to take precautions and be careful. So, thank you very much. That's it.
Daryl just said, that's why you don't cook. War two, David?
So as chairperson of Personnel and Safety, Catherine Farina was nice enough to send me an email on some additions to staffing. And as, as we all know, that the, the quality of the services that we get is based on the quality of the individuals that we hire. And in today's environment, finding good people is always a challenge. So shout out to Catherine for doing that part and finding the good people. Also, shout out to Ted Schepler. He was being recognized tonight at the Open House for his thirty-six years of service to the North Canton Fire Department. He actually began as a volunteer firefighter in nineteen eighty-seven, so thank you for your service. We do have some new part-time hires for the Fire Department. Kalia Clark. We also have Cationa Johnson, Bryce Schilling, Connor Pierceel, and Andrew Malett, all starting part-time positions in the North Canton Fire Department. Also in the Fire Department, starting next week, will be Jonathan Russell and Joshua Bliss. And then new full-time Police Department officers, we have Kyle Burns, and then starting the end of the month, Justin Low. So a lot of new people coming on board, a lot of new faces in town, building that base that we need, employees taking care of the residents. That's what I have.
Thank you, David. War three, Stephanie?
Just a thank you to the Finance Department. For all you're doing for the budget and working with the administration. I know there's kind of like a heavy sigh each week, because you're like, okay, that's one reading, now we're at two. Are there any changes? Has anything happened in that process until we, we finish that? So thank you, I know so much work went into that. And thank you to coming out tonight for our open meeting and asking questions and concerns. And please stay around, we'll all be hanging out, and we can try to answer some of your questions. There isn't an open, I guess, back-and-forth dialogue during. That's kind of for you to say your question and ask, and then you can wait, and maybe we'll have some answers. Or if we don't have them, then we will try to find them out for you. But we appreciate you being here. That's it.
All right, thank you, Stephanie. War four, John?
Yeah, again, I want to thank all of you for coming in and speaking, and those who are listening and stuff. We invite you every Monday, we meet here, so please come back. As I'm out campaigning, knocking on doors in Ward four, educating the people, the voters, on what we do and stuff. Pat, they're so happy about, down in Suri Hill, about those two, two buildings that we got rid of on, Westfield. Westfield. And they're very happy. They're very happy with the roads down there and stuff, though. They think it should be topped. I go, your roads are probably some of the best in the city down there. They are, we're getting a lot of responses to the fire emergency and stuff. I think we're going to get a good vote from down there as, as we're talking to the people. Still a lot of problems with deer and skunk down in that area. I told them, there's many people who like them, you know, and go from, and feed them and stuff. So they're, they're content, they're really happy down there on that.
The people or the deer and skunk?
Well, I think both. The people are very happy, and it's a really friendly area down there. But over on Salway, they are really grateful for the cleanup that we did on Salway. So thank you so much for that. Up closer to where I live, on Harmon, they had some tougher questions. They're worried about the middle school, and, you know, you got to tell them what we cover and what, you know, they cover. They would like another park, you know, well, it could be, you never know. They, they're concerned about parking. Parking is a problem up around there, and we're going to address that probably after the election. But other than that, hats off to the city, they're doing a good job from the constituents.
Thank you, John. Daryl?
Thank you.
I want to give some praise to the administrator tonight, but also want to thank those who are here tonight. Always welcome an opportunity to explain sometimes that what we do here often has a very good reason for doing it. Many of the things, most of the things we do are reviewed by lawyers. Imagine that in this world. This last week, close to my home, we had a large oak tree removed that had been determined to be a hazard. It was nearly dead, it was rotted through. But it was important to understand that the property owner was non-responsive and not cooperative, almost to the point of being belligerent. He hassled the surveyors who were out to establish the ownership of the tree, would not communicate with the building inspector, who came down to make some arrangements to have the tree removed. And at the end of the day, not only we blocked the street off, but we had to have two uniformed officers present to ensure that the homeowner did not interfere with the contractor. Now, throughout this entire process, there was one constant. Now, throughout this entire process, there was one constant, and that is, the inspector had a body camera.
Wow.
And he had it on for a reason. When we're out inspecting properties, when we're inspecting businesses, like Mr. Meisner has, it's important to establish a record so our officials are not accused of misconduct. It's just that simple. I can't imagine that my neighbor, had those cameras not been present, would not have accused somebody of misconduct. Think about this a second. Where this could have gone had not the administration handled this with great planning and execution. As a matter of fact, they even deferred having the tree removed today to make sure that the process, to make sure the process, if they encountered a problem, how they would follow up legally. But again, the constant is here, the important thing is to document that interaction, to ensure that our staff, our people, are protected from an unfounded allegation. So I regret that people believe their privacy may be violated, but the reality is, it's to protect all of us. Mr. Meisner and I may disagree on this, but the reality is, that's the world we live in today. So.
Are we allowed to talk?
No.
Okay. I've just never been to one of these before, so, sorry.
You're out of order. So I just think it's important to understand that everybody's here, that we, we often hear that there's this heavy hand of government, but the reality is, it's to protect all of us. The follow-on is this, is this, is if there is some activity that is improper and the city is found guilty, it's important to understand that we, you all, have immense financial liability in that matter, that if something goes sideways and a federal court determines that your friends at City Hall have abused their authority or mishandled it, there may be millions and millions of dollars that are on the table. It's going to come out of somebody's pocket. So the stuff we do, we do for a reason, and I think it's important to understand, that's why we do it.
I'm done. All right, Darrell? Christina?
Just like to say thank you to all of you for coming. It's great to walk in here and have a full room of people, and to hear from all of you. I appreciate everyone advocating for the pool. I certainly see the value of the pool as well, so appreciate you being here, sharing that, and that's all.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to echo the same sentiments. Thank you all for coming out, thank you for being respectful, also. The New Bullin Festival was fantastic. I think it was well above the expected participation. I think they ran out of beer at two o'clock and ran out of food shortly after, and it wasn't the greatest day. I mean, the weather wasn't the greatest, but it was fun to see a lot of families, a lot of kids, really fun. Buy and support local. We'll be around, so any questions, like if you, if you want to talk afterwards, we'll be here. If any of you have questions about anything else, feel free to approach us. Final call for new business. Meeting calendar coming up. Okay, so October sixteenth, we have a committee of the whole meeting. October seventeenth, we're going to have a joint meeting with Jackson Township. October twenty-third, regular city council meeting, and October thirtieth, we'll have a city council meeting in addition as well.
We need to vote on that.
What's that?
We need to vote on October thirty.
Revolt moves a meeting for October thirtieth, regular city council meeting.
Stroy a seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Revolt moves.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn.